Take care.
Good evening. I'd call the April third, twenty twenty three meeting of the University Heights City Council to order, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Here is Ra.
Here.
This is why I'm scared. Mr. Cooney.
Here.
Mr. King.
Here. Is there a motion to excuse Mr. Cool? A motion by Mrs. Sax, second by Mrs. Whitefield. Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Sax, I, Mrs. Langfield, I, Ms. Ra.
I.
Mrs. Wise, I, Mr. Cooney.
I.
Mr. King.
I. Motion carries. Please join me in signing.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands by God, in this court, with clarity and justice.
Next on among the agendas, the reading and disposal of the journal, we have two sets of minutes. The first is a set from March eighth, twenty twenty three. Is there a moment? Motion approved by Mrs. Lawrence and there. Second, uh, with that, Mrs. Sax, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Hi, Mrs. Langfield, I, Ms. Ra.
I.
Mrs. Wise, I, Mr. Cooney.
Yes, sir.
Mr. King.
I. A motion carries. Next, we will set up minutes from March twenty 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 three. Is there a moment? A motion approved by Mrs. Cooney. Is there a second? A second by Mr. Rock. Any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
This is, hi, Mrs. Langfield.
Hi.
Ms. Ra.
I.
Mrs. Wise, I, Mr. Cooney.
I.
Mr. King.
I. Hey, motion carries. Next item is additions and removal from the agenda and referrals to committee. Are there any additions, removals, or referrals? Okay, if there are none, then we will proceed to comments from the audience. Speakers may take up to five minutes to address the city. If you would like to address the city, please approach the podium. State your name and address. For the record, you may take up to five minutes. Yes, Mr. Rob. Or Mr. Collier.
You gotta make sure he's tall.
My attention might be gone so that we don't have good reporting.
And I had to make it taller than me. Oh, that's the place coming to the building, you know, smaller, but. Um, my name is Ronald Collier. I am a resident of forty-four forty-six Silby Road. I am here to address some of the possible, I saw on the city website, the possible, the possible addition about gun safety violence. Um, I'm, I'm an educator. I live in this community. I went to school here, but I went to Benedictine High School. And I currently am an educator at, um, for Cleveland Caffee Charities Early Learning Program Head Start at Quincy Place down over by Cleveland Clinic. I, I as an educator, I am very concerned about gun safety violence, and I'm not trying to make a political issue about which side has the right answers. I'm just trying to address how safe I should feel, not just at school, but in the community, like at places like, say, Macy's or at Heinz. I should feel, I should feel safe in this community, but I haven't worried about a man shooting, and I hope that the resolution that is probably up for debate tonight or in the next couple of weeks is passed. As educator and a long time resident of the city, I encourage you to strongly consider passing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. Is there anybody else who would care to address the city? Please approach the podium. I see.
My name is Stuart Alman, one Westwood Road, except in the summer when I sleep in the rough, sleep in the apartment structure. I feel to encourage you, you council members, to vote in favor of Mayor Brennan's resolution regarding AR fifteens. And in particular, I'd like to draw attention to one aspect of that resolution, and that is the aspect of impotence, by which I refer to the fact that this has been a longstanding struggle. It may surprise some of you who were born after the year two thousand or so that we once had in this country restrictions on the use of AR fifteen. I realize that in the era of creeping fascism, particularly in the state of Ohio, where homeschoolers are teaching their children how to read from the pages of Mein Kampf, that it may seem hopeless or helpless to pass a resolution in this venue against AR fifteens anywhere and everywhere. I disagree. I think that every legislated boy in the state, in the county, should pass this very resolution. I think it will be heard. I think this is a question of keeping on, keeping on. I think that it will be heard in Columbus and in Washington. It may not succeed in an immediate ban, but I hope that none of us is going to give way to despair, give up on this very essential struggle, which is critical to having a livable society. Children need to be able to go to school without being afraid that they will experience an active shooter and that they might not come home. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Rob. Is there anybody else who would care to address the city this evening?
Uh, Scott Walker, twenty-two twenty-four Edgerton Road. Um, I was very pleased to find on tonight's agenda, the resolution twenty twenty-three fifteen is supportive of restoring home rule to allow local government to again regularly fire our calling upon the state of Ohio to ban the AR fifteen, AR fifteen style semi-automatic weapons, among other common sense key gun safety reforms. I hope this, this, I hope this council adopts this resolution. As of twenty twenty-three, there have been over seven hundred gun deaths in the state of Ohio, one hundred thirty-six in the city of Cleveland. That's more deaths than there are days as of this year. At the national level, mass and school shootings are occurring way too often by any standard. It can only benefit University Heights to lead and find ways to get this state to consider common sense gun control, as is clearly evident, the state is not doing enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Is there anybody else who would care to address the city this evening?
Hi, I'm Catherine Bransky. I live at two-two-two-seven Edgerton Road, and I wanted to speak. I came to the rec committee. Um, I wanted to speak on the Ray Langton for Memorial. I would strongly suggest looking into a republic library because I've been going to the pool for over fifteen years. I knew Ray. He was always reading. I think that would be a great, um, asset to the pool or naming the slide after him as well. He, I remember my kids going, oh, the slides closed. The guards don't want to be at the slide. They go at Ray and see what he does. Well, over to Ray. I hear Ray whistling. Get over to the slide. There are kids who want to be on the slide. Um, Ray was a great person. He worked so hard at that pool and everybody loved him, so we will dearly miss him. So we would love to see the pool community, we would love to be, um, some way to memorialize him, that the pool community can recognize the reading, the slide. Those are things that we all associated with Ray. We're also moved, we are also hoping Calvert will be back at the pool, another longtime employee that we're losing. He wasn't there and I'm hoping he'll be there again. I don't know, but the pool will, it's definitely changing. So I just would encourage you to think about all the pool members who really will miss and to somehow recognize the years that they've put in. And I have one more question for council. Um, to, if you could obtain, what is the pool capacity? I've been trying to get that information for some time, and I, I don't know who I should talk to about that. Um, I have a daughter who's a lifeguard, um, and some nights it's just crazy. So I was just wondering if anyone would know what the pool capacity or who I would talk to. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bransky. Is there anybody else who would care to address the city this evening? Mrs. Snell.
Thank you. If there's no one else, I just received it on my way here. So, um, Mr. Charles Dave Addison Junior from thirty-nine oh-five Tindle Road asked me to read this statement. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash one five needs to be tabled and sent back to committee to allow cooler heads to prevail and fully evaluate and understand the long-term consequences of passing this resolution. As noted within the resolution itself, it is failed to pass in major cities within Ohio and exposes the city to potential costly litigation. We have already incurred X amount of legal dollars for the Schul settlement. I suspect many people in our fair city do not understand the full impact and total cost of the settlement and expenditure. For the past five to six years, the citizens and taxpayers of University Heights have been dealing with an administration that operates with emotional reaction as opposed to proactive planning and interaction, failing to work together with others within city hall, city council, invited subject matter experts, and the various citizens he represents. These are the pillars of effective leadership that have been continually overlooked and disregarded by the administration. If the mayor cannot properly issue a building permit for a new Chick-fil-A according to our code, I don't trust he can properly issue a gun permit without any input from recognized law enforcement experts and our own chief of police. That's the end of the statement.
Thank you, Mrs. Sax. Is there anybody else who would care to address the city this evening before we move on?
You might call it jumping the gun, but that would probably be wrong. Uh, where do we stand is really an issue that we're talking about today, but involving guns. State of Ohio will tie the hands of all communities to determine any real local control. What will it take for things to change? We're literally powerless to do anything. We fight about many things, but we should be united to protect residents against the senseless use of guns. Let us make a statement, regardless of whether the state acts on our behalf or not. Let's join together to stand as one and make that statement. We need change and we need it now. I ask that we pass the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Pearl.
Best please.
One time, twenty-five seventy-nine, blah, yeah.
Is there anybody else who would care to address the city this evening? Okay, if there's no one further, we will then turn to reports and communications from the mayor and the taking of action thereof. Uh, Mr. Cook and Mrs. Strucker are excused this evening due to illness. At the March twenty-first meeting, the whole meeting, I made a public comment, or rather, a public commitment to developing and issuing an RFQ, request for qualifications for city engineer for twenty twenty-four. Under the city charter, city engineer is a mayoral appointment. There is no requirement in the charter for bidding process. Nevertheless, the next city engineer this mayor appoints will be the result of a competitive bidding process. While this dialogue happened, while this dialogue we have had on the subject of the engineer is not one that I have initiated after listening to the concerns raised by council. I welcome holding the bidding process to help ensure transparency and integrity. I disagree with anyone who would say that previous processes lack that. Mr. Chuning is firm and hired from time to time. Their fees put before and proved by council from time to time, unanimous. None of that means that we cannot improve upon the process. We have two ordinances up tonight that would seem to do that, and I support the other. Zone Code made its initial presentation of diagnostic of our zoning code on March twenty-second. As described at that meeting, a timeline going forward will be established for working through our comprehensive zoning code update, likely to take twelve to sixteen months to complete. Some aspects of code, of the code have not been updated since their implementation in nineteen fifty-six. As I stated at the state of the city in February, generally, we have three current land use goals. One, to promote reuse and redevelopment to encourage economic growth in existing commercial areas. Two, ensure regulations that foster efficient land use and an aesthetically pleasing environment that is safe and inviting to pedestrians, cyclists, and motorized traffic. Three, encourage mixed-use development in appropriate areas to maximize redevelopment and to create areas of the city where residents can live, work, and play. Our zoning code largely does not support these current land use goals, which is no surprise if the current code well predates them. Our current code does promote high-quality housing, but does so in a one-size-fits-all manner that results in many variances being granted annually. Perhaps most significantly, while our residential neighborhoods are very walkable, our commercial districts are largely disconnected and unwalkable. A new code will encourage better scale and integration between our commercial and residential districts. We can be less automobile reliant and encourage walking, biking, public transit modes for all ages and abilities. As we heard in the presentation on March twenty-second, some features we can anticipate seeing include zoning particular to each of the several commercial districts, reduction of parking minimums, exploration of accessory dwelling units to promote aging in place and allow multi-generational living within a single property, a revisioning of Orangeville Center Road in light of the aggregation of student housing, the university-owned properties being developed, and a liberalization of special use permits. Going forward, we want to have the discussions now in the relative hypothetical, in advance of proposed projects about what we want to see in our city and then allow our planning commission, BZA, and ARB to defend our code. We want to put the world on notice about the redevelopment, redevelopment we want here in University Heights and let developers come with proposals that fit our vision, rather than grafting their visions onto our decades-old code. We want to put, we are in a position to do something truly unique and special, something that makes us more who we are, something that leverages our demographics and density, something that honors our history without being held back by it. To do that, we will work together to craft custom-tailored, clear, consistent, user-friendly, equitable, desirable zoning regulations in advance of the city's redevelopment with a high quality of life. The following is a matter of public record. Also, on March twenty-second, the city filed its memorandum in opposition to Alexander Schule's motion for attorney fees and costs. The briefing, the declaration, opinions of our expert civil rights litigator, Marcus Sadadi, together with my own declaration of ninety-eight paragraphs regarding years of factual background supported by two-hundred-and-twenty-six pages of exhibits are all now part of the record. I have nothing else to say about it at this time, except to direct anyone who might inquire to that court final. When I was a new mayor, I came in with the ideas that I ran on, the ideals and principles that I hold, and an agenda of agreed-upon items with which the city was able to move quickly over the course of my first few years and off. Matters of reform upon which we commonly agreed. There were nevertheless also matters waiting for me that were not of my choice. One, I just mentioned, Alexander Schule. Another was the litigation threatened over the posted no guns signs at Purvis Park. There was an outstanding complaint registered with the city that these city signs prohibited firearms at Purvis Park and at the pool were non-permissible. The complaint was, in my view, misguided, stating that he ought to be able to protect himself at the pool. After evaluating the matter with the law director, I ordered the signs taken down, rather than face litigation over the issue that the city would not only stand to lose, but be made to pay attorney fees to prevailing party. Since that time, Service Director Jeff Corning and I added additional emergency exits to the pool area so that our residents and city employees would not be trapped in the pool area in the event of an emergency, including an emergency regarding an active shooter. Since that time, Police Chief Dustin Rogers and I have increased security at certain pool events to help keep our residents and our employees safe, to discourage those who would do us harm. Since that time, I've taken annually complaints about the signs no longer being present. The city has even received complaints of residents being armed in the pool. Those complainants do not feel safe with the presence of the guns. And since that time, we have seen the escalation of gun violence in our country. And every time it happens, the call for thoughts and prayers instead of taking action. I wrote and sponsored Resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifteen because gun safety is a matter of local concern. Our hands have been tied since March two thousand seven, when ORC nine point six eight took effect. It originated in the two thousand six Land Duck Session. The legislature overrode Governor Taft's veto, and eighty-some local gun ordinances were swept away. As a matter of history, our own borough Rothschild, as a council member before she was mayor, sponsored chapter six thirty-two of the University Heights Code on gun control. The city implemented it in nineteen seventy-six, and it remains on the books as an oddity, wholly unenforceable, as local government has been preempted from taking action on this issue since two thousand seven. With this resolution, we call upon our state government to either restore home rule and let us regulate firearms, or go ahead and take the steps necessary statewide to implement true gun safety reform. I, for one, appreciate that, like fireworks, there might not be a one-size-fits-all solution for all communities across our diverse state. That said, the resolution is not intended to infringe upon the rights of people to lawfully and responsibly possess a firearm. That in our nation of ordered liberty, we recognize that rights come with responsibilities, and that the right to bear arms carries the responsibility to ensure the public health, safety, and welfare of the community at large, as well as that of the individual. That the right to live in a society, to go to school, to go to church or synagogue, a mosque, to go to the grocery store or a movie theater or an entertainment venue that is free of gun violence is at least as important as the right to possess and use a firearm defensively. Thus, gun safety is a matter of local concern. It has affected what we can do here to keep our people safe, and we are limited in what we may do to keep our people safe. I am hopeful that we will pass this resolution this evening and that we will be the change that we want to see. Thank you. This concludes my report. Next is reports and communications from the city council on the taking of action thereof.
And, Ben. As many of the public has heard, there was a council behold joint infrastructure and facilities meeting on February twenty-first. The tremendous work, I'm sorry, on March twenty-first, the tremendous work by the committee referring to professional service ordinance that can potentially set a precedent to other northeast Ohio communities was overshadowed by Michael Dylan Brennan's remark, the dumbest person in council, or our fellow councilwoman, Sherry Sacks. This pattern of aggressive behavior began years ago. In fact, he was publicly censured by council. His unwillingness to collaborate, compromise, and unprofessional conduct has caused, has caused University Heights undue delays in projects, decrease in employee morale, litigations, and resignations. Any disparaging remarks amongst colleagues, residents, and invited guests are not to be tolerated in council chambers ever. His apology was not authentic, nor was it sincere. It was left on a voicemail, and every comment was qualified by him. Furthermore, the Cleveland dot com article did further damage. Mr. Brennan never seems to have any issue talking to reporters and issuing statements. However, this time the statement was delivered through Mr. Clark. I am sure Mr. Brennan authorized the statement, which is all the more worrisome since it victimized the victim and moreover accused council members of name-calling, which is a blatant lie. A communication director's position is to speak about the city in a positive light. City time and city resources were abused to give opinions not based on fail. The communication director's own personal character is now tarnished. A formal reprimand by the city administration is warranted, and my hope is that Mr. Clark apologizes to those wrongly accused or suspended. I will cite my books. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other reports or communications from the city plans? Seeing done, we will now turn to reports and communications from the directors, and we'll start with Department of Finance, Mr. Kennedy.
Good evening. Just want to give everybody an update, um, on our financial position through the end of March. These are all unofficial numbers as of yet we have not closed in March, but I'm confident enough to represent where we're at right now. Um, net revenue for the first quarter of the year was four million seven hundred and twenty thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars. This is in the general fund, by the way. Net expenses in the general fund were four million five hundred and twenty thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars. Um, so basically, our revenue exceeded our expenses for the first quarter. We started out with a beginning balance of just over six and a half million dollars in the general fund, uh, unexpended, and we are now at six points in force. It's good news. Uh, in terms of all funds, um, net revenue through the first quarters, six point seven million dollars. Net expense, five point two million. So again, the revenue far outpaced the expenses during the fourth quarter. Some of that is timing issues. Uh, we do get our final settlement in the county. Property taxes in March, that money will be generally spent over the course of the next three months till we get the next distribution in the summer. Uh, to give you a little information on income tax, um, through April, we just got our April numbers, uh, which is the remittance based on March collections through the Regional Income Tax Agency. We are year-to-date at three million five hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars. That is a hundred and fifteen thousand one hundred and fifty-three dollars more than the first four months of last year, which is an increase of three point three percent. So came all the way back from the dire straits we were in during the COVID pandemic, and now still continue to show some marginal growth, which is good so far. So, um, with that, the only other thing I'd like to remind everyone of is municipal income tax day. Finally, date is April eighteenth this year. So encourage everybody to, um, get those. So encourage everybody to get those. Returns filed with Regional Income Tax Agency before April eighteenth. If you have any questions about insurance. Thank you much.
Thank you, Mister Kennedy. Any questions? Looks like a question there. The next is our Director of Law, Mister Recom. No report, Mayor. Thank you. Next then is Public Safety Chief Ralph. No report, thank you. And then Public Safety Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Council one item to report, spring hydrant flushing season is a pass. We're working to finalize our schedule. It will be starting sometime in April. We'll be working around the upcoming holidays and some of the projects in the city. And I'm sure it'll go through the month of May. So we just encourage residents, if this gets out there, make sure you run your water, cold water until it's clear. Thanks.
Thank you, Chief Perko. Any questions for Chief Perko? Next is service. We don't have a representative in service department, but I will pass along the following. Spring cleaning has begun. By the service department here in the city of University Heights. You're welcome to take your leaves back out to the curb sooner rather than later. Loose the leaf trees. We're only out half the day today due to three other sewer issues. They were working on, but they are out and will be out through the end of the month. So. As you work on your yards and work on your yardways to get it out to the curbs. And our service department should be there sometime this month. Also, there is a Passover pickup on Wednesday morning from eight till noon. This is food items only, securely bagged, placed curbside. Please try to have your items out by seven thirty in the morning. That will be most helpful to the. Service departments are making ground when the Passover pickup while doing regular Wednesday rubbish. Finally, with regards to the spring cleanup, that does go through April. We will then also be addressing the parks. As per usual, the parks will be addressed in May. So if you hear from residents about mulching or wood chips. Other such park cleanup, we focus on the residences and residential areas first. And then we switch our attention to the parks with the beginning of May. And that would be it on service. Mrs. Sack.
Mayor, I've sent little emails that have gone unanswered. That I'm wondering if they will be answered pre-carding the sweepers' schedule, street cleaning. So hopefully you'll, you haven't seen it, you've been very busy, you'll be able to look in your inbox and see it.
Okay, Mister Pichello doesn't have email. There's an email address that exists for him to get and have it. It doesn't, but yeah, there is no email.
Okay, so I sent you a picture of sewer grade. It's an example of residents who've been reaching out to me. Basically, I told them that it could be that a car's parked, if it's that side of the street where the car's been parked, they could be obstructing. But when they see that it's on the other side of the street where there is no parking, it means the streets were not come through. And it's, it's not throughout the city, so I'm just. I'm sure I'm not the only one getting those kinds of calls and questions. I think it would be helpful to the council to understand what the schedule is.
Yes.
And then I also sent something about comparative, I'm sorry, about some hiring suggestions. That was middle of the month, that month. You know, I appreciate some dialogue to try to help. To help with the labor shortage of. Of our rubbish club. So I'd appreciate a response if possible. Thank you.
Yeah, spring cleanup began today. So the sweepers will be coming out as part of that third of this month. Today is the beginning of spring.
I mean, some speeds are.
And then I did receive your email regarding hiring. Ex-cons from the student program. I know that the community at large has not favored that in previous instances where, you know, we still have backyard pickup. Folks aren't under a lot of direct supervision constantly. And that is, there are some other things I think we should be trying, and those are matters that we are. In discussions through our HR department with laborers, eight sixty, or some other. Things we could potentially enter an MOU on that would help our hiring position, but don't involve that.
I agree. I have other ideas, and I hope at the April twenty-seventh meeting, you'll be able to bring those ideas. With HR, it would be wonderful. Thank you. The Services and Utilities Committee meeting on April twenty-seventh.
Yeah, we wouldn't usually bring a char to a meeting like that.
Well, then I hope you bring the ideas. Because it is part of a plan that will be necessary to implement this aggressive program.
Yeah, matters involving labor negotiation, I. Don't want to get into more details on on the record than I have just.
Okay, so just the courtesy of response would be appreciated if nothing else occurred. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any service department related questions for me to see? Very good. Moving on, we will now extend to housing and community development, Mister Angleback. Thank you. City Engineer, Mister Chin.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just one quick item. The construction project at the corner of Saybrook, Soosby in Washington is going to start on Monday, April. Big construction meeting with a contractor this Thursday, CA Grant the company. This is the project to hit the curb bump ups. And create the bio swales in that area where we're bumping the curbs up, curbs out, make it intersection a little bit smaller. It is funded by the Northeast Ohio Regional District.
Thank you, Mister Chin. Any questions for Mister Chin? I have one. I already know the answer to it. I'm going to ask them. Will the project be done in time for the Memorial Day parade?
I forgot about that. Yes, by contract, they have to be done in forty-five days, and that will be the week before the Memorial Day. So we'll be completed.
Very good. Thank you, Mister Chin. Yes, Mrs. White. I don't believe there's anybody here. Is Mister Garcia here?
Thank you.
Yeah, you recall, we've asked Mister Garcia, you know, not to attend these meetings, but if you'd like him to attend a future meeting, we can make arrangements. Okay, Communications and Civic Engagement, Mister Cook is not here. I do have a report to City Council. I am unable to attend in person tonight due to a family health issue. While I'm confident everything will be fine, I will work from home for the suggestion of my wife's doctor. For the next day or two. As for a report, the deadline for the May issued mosaic is fast approaching. That would be April eleventh. Summer issue will provide information on the pool and summer recreation, the Memorial Day Parade, the Summer Conference Series, and Jim King. All spaces at the cranium, I will work in additional news and features. If anyone in University Heights has suggestions for story ideas, please feel free. Send me an email. I am working with Deanna Bremmer Fisher on planning the ball fest. Earlier today, an application was emailed at to our database of artists. If any other artists would like to apply to set up a tent at Ball Fest, the application is on the city website. They can also email a request for an application to info@universityheights.com. And that concludes Mister Cook's report. Next is, oh, yeah.
Did they have a streaming service that we could be part of today?
I know that Logan was here in Mister Cook's absence, looking at the streaming. And looked at it extensively, and I understand he's preparing a report for us, but that basically trying to operate it off the iPad is simply not going to work. And I think a recommendation is being made that we get a separate, different laptop for operating the streaming service. I have not seen that report yet. Understand that report. Economic Development, Mrs. Drucker Tugill, and let's excuse them from this evening's meeting, and there is no report. We now turn to item nine, the reading and disposition of ordinances, resolutions, motions. Consideration of agenda items, and the first item on the agenda is a motion to enter executive session with Labor Council and HR Manager. To discuss labor negotiation. So. There are other items on the agenda of interest, I imagine, in the public. I don't believe our executive session will take too long, but Mister Iosu and Mister Letnick are both here. We'd like to have a brief meeting with them in the other room before we proceed. So if you hear of one of the other items, please bear with us. And we'll be out as soon as practical. Is there a motion to enter into executive session? The Labor Council and HR Manager to discuss labor negotiation.
Hi, Mr. White.
Hi.
Mrs. White. And Mr. Marine.
Hi.
Mr. Bean.
Hi. Very, very good. We will move to the room over there, and we will try to keep the screen. Okay. I just. I'm hoping. I've had a personal. I. It's. Uh. It. It. Um. They. Um. It. It's. Uh. In there. Um. Yeah. It. If. As. And. I. Very. It. Yeah. It. They. That's. Need to take it. More. Great. Yeah.
Yeah. Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to return to regular session?
Okay.
A motion by Mrs. Sacks, seconded by Mr. Rock, so we hold the rule.
As you said, I'm. Mrs. Branco, hi, Mr. Rod.
Hi.
Wise, hi.
Hi. Hi. Hey, very good, uh, we are back in the regular session, next item on the agenda is item B, motion to waive any conflicts of interest to allow. Border zoning appeals trigger, REJAD need to represent CLE and our for the city. University Heights and its boards and commissions and to authorize the mayor to execute waiver, Mr. McCollum.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, the city's been approached by R.J. who was many of you know is the chair of our. Uh, border zoning appeals. Uh, because he has been, um, sought or are, um. Asked to provide legal services to a group who is interested in. Um, locating a shule at the. Current for what we've been calling the old location of the Highland Green Road. Um. In order to provide, um, necessary protection both to Mr. Jack and to the city, um, we're requesting that this conflict of interest be waived. Um, to clarify one thing, um, Mr. Javdi would be. Included from dissipating in any border zoning appeals processes, um, he would have to recuse himself and has indicated already. His willingness to do that. Um, the customary, um. Uh, process for, um. Analyzing the waiver would be for Mr. Javdi to provide us with a letter that disposes of the conflict. Um, and then allows us to acknowledge it through, um. Uh, sign signing the agreement essentially. Um, we do not have that from Mr. Jack as of yet, I think he's waiting to see what the outcome this will be, but. Um, in the interest of, um. Maximum transparency, we place this on the, um, agenda to be waived during a council meeting. And it's the, you know, um. The administration recommendation that this conflict waiver be given. Uh, because we're confident that we can work collaboratively with Mr. Javdi and his respective client. Um, in the best interests of all parties.
Thank you, Mr. McCollum. I have nothing to add, everything I would have said, so. Is there a motion to win?
Any motion?
Motion by Mrs. Wise, is there a second?
A second, I just have one.
By Mr. Rock.
Um, in the actual waiver that you'll execute, it'll state in there that, uh, Mr. Javdi was recusing something, I mean, you mentioned it, but so it's in my name.
Yeah, he'll he'll draft it, I'll review it, um. Again, the, the. Point of that waiver will be for anyone who looks at it, whether it's a week from now or two years from now, know. Exactly what was happening, what was being disclosed, why it was happening. And yes, it will be specific as to, um, Mr. Japanese being prohibited from participating in. Um, BCA matters that would relate to this group and. And just to put a, um. Slightly finer point on that, that means that he cannot participate at all, cannot, um, comment. You know, he cannot participate in deliberations, not just that he can't vote. Said he cannot participate in any of the discussion. Um, also, as you know, I am, um. Present at the BCA meetings and having the past interview to. Either answer a question about conflict of interest or suggest to remember that. Um, they ought to accuse themselves. Um, so, um, I can assure you that you will not be participating.
That was my question, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Sacks.
Thank you, would he be counted as part of the forum?
You'd be counted as part of the forum for purposes of meeting going forward, but, um, if. If, for example, they only had three members present. Um, for the meeting to be open. Um, that meeting, that item would not be able to be considered, it would have to have at least four members out of five present so that they could have a. Voting majority.
Thank you.
Thank you, any further question? Discussion? And, uh, Mrs. Thomas, we call the rule.
This is it, hi, this is Blainville. Hi, Mr. Rod.
Hi.
This is Wise.
Hi.
This is Rooney.
Hi.
This is King.
Hi.
Very good, if she cares. Our next item is item C, motion to approve the fourth addendum professional services agreement entered into on March fourth, twenty twenty one between City of University Heights and. Saint Phil Ohio LLC and authorize the mayor to execute the same, I'll take this one, um. The fourth addendum for professional services is to add planning and zoning consultation services. To the safe build agreements on an as needed basis for. Particular. Larger projects, these are not your garden variety, um, BCA type. Variance identification, but rather. Uh, planning and zoning consultation on larger projects, we recently had a planning commission meeting where we did not have such board. Um, with regard to an applicant. Major project. Uh, similarly, we've had projects such as the. That are going to be coming up in greater detail, such as the South Gateway Project, Joint University. Plans regarding University Square, there's going to be numerous opportunities where we will be. Somebody who can provide planning and some, of course, the city does not have. Employed currently a city planner. Uh, that is something I would like to see at some point, but in the meantime. Um, some of these services can be covered through safe bills and other than higher city planner at this time. Would encourage that we. Execute the fourth addendum to allow the occasion planning and consultation services on as the basis for. Planning Commission and, uh, their boards and missions as need, especially. Funding. Are there any questions?
Yes, Mr..
Just walk me through this, so I will understand, um. Safe Bill is our chief building official. Um, as a vendor and they. Selected, um. Chief Building Official for University, right? And that's Dan.
Yes.
Their.
Mr. Garcia.
Okay, so I guess my question, I have two questions regarding. The zoning review, you mentioned that, um. This is not to determine what goes to. Board of zoning, which is to do a zoning review, I understand correctly.
No, 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 I, I perhaps I was unclear. You know, Mr. Garcia is still going to be responsible for attending BCA meetings and giving one, you know. Giving reports with regard to individual applications, something that. I've gone over with Mr. Garcia with regarding his responsibilities, this is for projects like the. Like the, um. Uh, University Square. Like the South Gate Bay Projects, a much larger projects that require much more of a deep dive and, and specialized kind of.
So. We already have this in our contract, so I asked for the original contract. One that was dated twenty twenty one, this particular thing is already something. See. Or something that is in the scope of work, Mr. Garcia's was formed. Um. Whether the size of the project is large or small. Do a zoning review for the project for purposes of the entitlements. Has to be done regardless, you can't issue a building permit without. Knowing if it needs code. And specifically under the voted official services. Um, scope of work. It talks about, you know, guiding through the complexities of the codes in order to obtain points, and then. Mentions throughout the document about monitoring changes to codes, including state and local requirements, determine how they may impact projects in the area. And make recommendations in local amendments, and they talk about, um, assist municipal staff. In revising and updating municipal, so the municipal code is the zoning. So I, I guess I'm a little taken back by. Why you believe this is separate, I mean. I guess let me ask you this, um. When the application for Chick-fil-A came through. How did it get determined that it had to go to planning? Mrs. Thomas.
Because for my point of view, it was a major project. Where you one had built a tier down. And rebuild. Any. Building that's burned down has to go to planning commission for approval. For demo.
So you were the one that made that determination, not the voting department?
No, I don't think I made the determination, totally. Um, but from my aspect, my thinking was in handwork.
Sure.
But I did not talk to Chick-fil-A and say you have.
So who did that?
I believe that may have been, um, our economic development person.
Okay.
Director along with other other persons would be, I don't know, I, I can't comment that.
So whose job, whether it be at Safeville or in University Heights, is it to determine if something needs to go to planning commission or board of zoning appeals or architecture review board on any. Uh, application, not just Chick-fil-A one, but just any application, whose job is that?
So I, I want to interject, because I don't think, um. I don't think Ms. Thomas has fairly put on this front about these questions, um. You know, that determination should be made administratively, um, and I think in the past, it's always been. Combination of the voting department working practically with the mayor and law department to determine what the route is going to be. Um, I, I don't know that I was asked specifically about Chick-fil-A, but I do agree with the decision that. Um, they needed to be before planning commission because, among other things, um, they had a comprehensive site. For review.
And so you had opined in that same meeting that variances would be required. Whose job is it to determine what variances are required and at what point they need to present, because. Up until that meeting, I didn't know we needed variances from anybody in administration, no one said anything to me, nobody put it on the agenda, nobody told the public, you notify neighbors in so many feet. There had not been any mention that a variance requires, whose job is it to determine? Whether a variance is required or not, and then under what grounds?
Simply that would be happening in the building department, I can refer to you, Mayor, we don't have a city plan. And if we had a city plan.
I've never had a city plan.
Uh, we've had a city. And Zach. He was the city. He was the city, and we also had, um. When we, we've had other building commissioners. You know, in the past, like Mr. Reynolds, who provided some of this, but not necessarily the detail that we're looking to do here.
So what I'm hearing is, and what I've seen in the contract, this is their job. Period, it's their job to review zoning, make. Period. It's their job to review zoning, make sure it's in performance before sending them on their way to this meeting, to that meeting, or permit, whether it has to go to this. This is their job. It's in black and white here on their contract. Now, I looked over the amendment here, planning and zoning consultation. It took the words right out of my mouth. It sounds like we're hiring a city planner. Because when I read the description of work, this is all city planning stuff. And that's not something we need right now. So if we do, let's talk about it. And if we need a city planner, let's put out an RFQ, or maybe we need a master plan. I don't know. But I'm hearing for the first time, and I'm seeing that we're trying to sneak in a city planner from Safeville without any, you know. When I don't know if Safeville can handle this type of. I see how they are forming building services. I don't know how they do any C or qualifications. So, you know, if we were to consider this, I mean, most of these things we don't even need. We don't need updates to our zoning code and other land development regulations. That's something zone codes. We don't need preparation of special studies. Preparation zoning code amendments. I mean, again, this is something that we're already paying zone code significant amount of money for. So I'm a little taken back by this. And furthermore, fact that it says that these services would be done by a senior associate planner. You don't need to be a senior planner to read the zoning. In fact, any building official can read the zoning. If you didn't read a building code, it's really not that. So I would say, no, I would not put a senior planner, he's harder to review in our zoning, but that's the building official's responsibility. So this is their job. I think we need to go back to the table and talk and explain this.
Yes, Mr. Rock. This being stated as needed. This is not not we're billing out work to be done. You've identified areas where we have somebody that's able to potentially may not. Mr. Garcia is not able, certain projects, to know to review that. We have somebody that is available from Safeville if this were to be approved. They could work you. This is my understanding, the information. Then the, if we don't use Safeville for any of these items, we have no expense. If we do have an expense, and there is some concern in our budget that would have council, only expect our revenues actually to review. This is something we would see. And I understand your concerns and hear you saying but we do have some projects coming down the pipeline. And I'm reviewing this as simply if we need a tool and
Sure, and I understand your point, but that's not the job of senior planners. They don't some cities do have planners review, like Cleveland Shaker, and in Pepper Pike. And Safeville is the building commissioner in Pepper Pike. They don't have their senior planner review things for zoning. And that's just not how it's done. You go to the city of Cleveland Building Department. This is the work of the building department. Now, if they want to assign it to their senior planner at a senior planner's hourly rate, when anybody in the building department can do it at a significantly reduced rate, that's on them. But for the ad needed, what does that mean? I mean, I'm not here to supervise, but what if that, you know, this person's sitting here 20 hours a week at a desk? I have no control over how many hours are assigned because I'm hearing this is for a city planner role. And at this point in time, we don't have a need for a city planner. There's nothing to plan. We're built out. There's no more landing. So I don't know why we're even reviewing this.
Mrs. Sands.
Thank you. I understand this contract and the one that's currently in place, the contract is with Safeville as a company. It's not with Mr. Garcia. So Safeville is, the onus is on them to provide whatever is needed to fulfill the terms of their contract. And if it needs somebody other than Mr. Garcia, that's what they're actually obligated to provide.
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I also reviewed the original current contract, and there seems to be a lot of overlap that we are supposed to be doing right now versus what you are asking. If these things were not in place that you're asking for right now, how did Zerfong High and get built? How did the current John Carroll Construction get built? Who did that?
I would have to go back and see exactly how the work was done.
So it got done without this. So it seems that people were doing it. We've been here for those other two pieces, and it's in their contract currently. So I would be inclined to.
We put this before you because after what happened at the Chick-fil-A meeting, it was clear that we didn't have anybody working in the building department who was doing the kind of work that was called by the planning commission at that particular meeting. It is not intended to be an assigned person who sits over at the building department. This is on an occasional project basis. I don't and that's not supposed to be duplicative of anything in zone codes. This is essentially supposed to be just basic projects. There are there are some additional things that are listed here for potential future flexibility. Sometime down the road after some code is completed, it's work. If there was somebody we wanted to go to to help us with a zoning code amendment, after we've updated our zoning, then, you know, this particular addendum might cover for wood cover. It was not zone code's opinion that the that the contract is currently that we currently have uncovers the degree of report that we were looking for with regard to Chick-fil-A. And knowing that we had other significant projects coming up and knowing that there was a paramount of meaningful criticism with regard to what we didn't have at the last planning commission meeting. This was the administration's effort to remedy that, to ensure that our commissions have, and the planning commission in particular, has the zoning review that is needed so that we're not relying on individual commissioners to write their own. Mrs. Sands.
Anyway, I appreciate you trying to remedy the Chick-fil-A situation. I think part of what happened here was we've had three or four building commissioners from Safeville over the last couple of years, and no one has ever been able to stay long enough to be able to perform their duties yet. I know that Mr. Cooney's been meeting with Mr. Garcia for a few things, and it's overwhelming. They need to be in the position, you know, for six months or a year before they can even get their feet wet and start tools. The only reason that I really feel that this is not needed is had big projects. We never needed this before because they've done it. So I think, I think it was, it was like a perfect storm of a new building commissioner, a unique kind of application, but to me, it seems like.
Yes, Mr. Rock. I now speaking of Mr. Garcia, there some of the information comes in waves. What it worries me. I'm looking at this as if a, if it is needed, it is built. I understand for our concern, somebody descriptions or titles that maybe associated with it. Should this be something that should be, you know, reviewed through finance, by any commission? I'd prefer probably not to but maybe more prudent to refer it there. Because we do, my concern is that products coming up, there's an agenda item regarding the city engineer. I don't want to put us in a position, you said, no, I think, damn. It should be a look at husband's business. We look a little more extensively. Maybe bring back counsel for it was better on a short-term.
And if I could just piggyback off of that, if you look at their fee schedule, you have they've only added two lines, and that's for the scene and associate planner, but on the fee schedule, they have positions across the board of ministry to inspection services, to plan review personnel. So the fact that there are a lot of people pulled from to read our zoning. And the inspector who has to understand and interpret the building code, has to understand and interpret local zoning in their contract. So I understand you're saying this is another person for our toolkit, most expensive person. Again, you don't need a senior planner doing this kind of work. It's not for for the inspector, for the building.
It'd be an active conversation, yeah. Also, the zone code. You know, this several Austin here right now, and I think Mayor's proposing as no give advice to it, to leave. But I think maybe just take a step back and a little bit even die. And I think there's a lot of valuable information here that we could use if it's needed. If we don't need it, then there's no expense.
And if we need it, we still.
I do think there's.
Here, I would make an objection to you first.
Here, we have a motion to approve this item to the building and housing committee. Is there a second? I'll say. Second by Mr. Cooney, any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, speak over the room.
Sands.
Hi.
Mrs. Blaineville.
Hi.
Mr. Rock.
Hi.
Mrs. Weis.
Hi.
Mrs. Cooney.
Hi.
Mrs. King.
Hi.
Very good. The item is preferred.
Next is letter D, motion to approve the acceptance of the OCJS 2023 BWC grant award of $22,809. Also the lead for that, item E related, so Chief Rogers, you can floor an item D. Thank you, Mayor. It's a number of last year. Carbon plant for bodywork camera review of high loss services. We're requesting funding assistance for bodywork camera equipment data solution licensing as well as the function warranties. And this is kind of a build off of bodywork camera grant projects last year, 2022, which we were awarded 16,000 dollars last year. That was from the Bureau of Justice Systems grant to implement a new program that recognizes that for watch guard. So again, we started this process of integration last spring. This most recent grant that we got, and the amount of $22,809 through Justice Services. We did receive notification in February this year that we received that amount utilized for equipment and services that were mentioned. So this time I would respect the request of council authorization for the city to receive those funds with the intention of purchase that related. Very, very good. Thank you, Chief. One other item, just to confirm that this grant has no match for the city, which is different from last year's grant that we received for $6,000. This is $23,000.
Very good. Any questions for Chief Rock? Is there a motion to approve the exam? Motion by Mrs. Blaineville. Second by Mrs. Sands, any discussion? Mr. Thomas, speak over the room.
Sands.
Hi.
Mrs. Blaineville. Hi. Mr. Rock.
Hi.
Mrs. Weis.
Hi.
Mrs. Cooney.
Hi.
Hi.
And motion carries. Next is item E, motion to approve the purchase of BWC equipment licensing and warranties with solutions and the amount of $2,889. Chief Rock.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is a second piece to the our agenda item. December requesting purchase of the equipment batteries, licensing for data storage, warranties, transfer station within that grant we just awarded in February. This is being requested purchase through WatchGuard. Who not only provided us their previous equipment that we purchased last year, they also have a safe contract base for this equipment. And this purchase of this equipment would allow us to then be in a position where we have body cameras related equipment where we can issue jobs or their own individual bodywork. As a result, will undoubtedly advance operations.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Any questions from the Chief? Yes.
As always, I'm sure I speak for all my allies that I really appreciate the pride that you have on these events and for such important persons. Especially for all reasons you just stated.
Thank you. You have a lot of good administrative stand.
Thank you.
So I'm going to take that then as a motion to approve by Mrs. Blaine. Second by Mr. King. Any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, speak over the room.
Sands.
Hi.
Mrs. Blaineville.
Hi.
Mr. Rock.
Hi.
Mrs. Weis.
Hi.
Mrs. Cooney.
Hi.
Hi.
And motion carries. Thank you.
Next is item of ordinance 2023-13, amended modified ordinance sections 12.02 entitled contract procedures 12.02 entitled professional contracts, unique services and/or supplies by adding RFQ requirements for projects, professional service contracts, $1,000, which clearing an emergency, this is on first reading. Thank you, Mayor. This is attracting procedure of ordinance that was discussed at length in committee, reflects the changes that were, I think, agreed upon between administration and council during the meetings. In 2001 and in 2002, the change in the reference to $15,000, which is the mayor's spending authority to a more generalized, more mayor's spending authority. So that if and when that changes, you will not be in a position where you need to modify the ordinance. In addition, we're clarifying subsection C of 2001 per Mr. Cooney's suggestion so that we have the flexibility to accept bids in instances where there's only one bid for whatever reason. In 2002, which is where the much more substantive changes are contained, we are enacting an RFQ procedure in connection with contacts that are valued at $50,000 or more with respect to the responses that we get to any particular RFQ. If there are three or fewer responses, the mayor will select those qualifications. In instances where there are more than three qualifications, we're going to have a scoring system put into place. And that scoring will occur either by an RFQ selection committee in instances where our department head, whose department the RFQ relates to this bidding, or if the department head is not bidding, then the department head will be the individual who scores. So just to flesh that out a little bit, if we have an engineering project and the city engineer who is preparing to plan, suspects bids on the project, the review of the RFQs will go to a selection committee. If however, the city engineer is not bidding on the project, then the city engineer will conduct the scoring himself. The scoring will result in a list of the top three qualifications, and then the mayor will select on that list of the top three. I think that about sums it up.
Mrs. Sands.
Yes, thank you. So I want to just say how proud I am of council and the administration for getting this done, especially the hard work of Mr. Chuni, who was an integral part of constructing this this this, you know, piece of legislation. I think this can set a precedent for more of these to file. There's, to my knowledge, not one like this. I do want to just specify there are a few carve-outs. Um there's, to my knowledge, not one like this. Um I do want to just um specify there are a few carve outs. Um one is any contract with the law director, the city prosecutor. Um any legal counsel pointed through an insurance or indemnity company. Um any contract with service by the state auditor. And any any product or service that is so unique or rare or specialized, there's no true competition. And finally, there's an. Move to the. So I'm excited of passage of this and.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Um yeah, so I got a chance to read through this whole thing and. About it as well. My only concern is under two twelve oh ones. Their spending authority. I hear what you're saying is that spending authority adjusts this. Will have to come to. I mean, before council, there is the uh. In cases spending authority ever goes beyond fifty thousand. I don't think anytime soon, what this is saying is as long as it's within the spending authority, that's. They, I want to be clear, anything over fifty still scope whether or not it meets the.
Yeah, in fact, that's an issue that um Vice Mayor and I discussed. Um. There were some comments to the ordinance. One of them was that um. Both of those dollar amounts be substituted. Um the mayor's spending authority, the fifteen thousand dollar amount substituted with the mayor's spending authority. And then the other comment was that fifty thousand be substituted with. Um the limit set by the state of Ohio. And um Vice Mayor clarified that she did not want that second proposed comment to be implemented. She wanted the dollar amount to be fifty thousand as hard dollar amount. So irrespective of what the state does, any contract in the city of University Heights that um is valued at fifty thousand or more will have to go through this RFQ process, except for the ones that are specifically accepted. And also would have to um amend this legislation in order to change that dollar amount.
So I guess we're, I want to make sure it's clear, is that fifty thousand threshold, uh maybe we have to say regardless of the spending authority. In the event the spending authority becomes sixty thousand. Um I wanted to be clear that fifty thousand is still um. Being a competitive process.
I I think you're in a position to, you know, go ahead and amend this ordinance because you'll be the ones controlling the spending authority here to here. I mean. At the rate that we've expanded our mayoral spending for, I can't imagine the mayor's spending authority reaching um. Sixty thousand to overturn the century. Well, but um there's no plans. I'm being facetious about that, but I I I guess the point is that you're really in direct control that you're going to know.
I always say that because probably none of us will be here when that happens. So we're not going to remember.
Oh, I feel like if I may, you know, simply for putting it into the record, you know, it's a matter of. And it's. For condo um. Want to put my legal hat on for a moment. As a matter of statutory construction where you have the general versus the specific. We have a general statement that says mayor's spending authority, then we have a specific statement that says thousand dollars. While specific is always going to override the general. So as a matter of of statutory construction. Even if the mayor's spending authority were someday to exceed fifty thousand and we didn't amend this ordinance, I would argue that fifty thousand still applies to the current items. Because there's a specific dollar amount listed, that's right. Right. And then there's the next. So. I don't have any heartburn about. Not amending this at this time to reflect anything different. I believe. That if my spending authority as mayor exceeded fifty thousand, then I would still be bound to a fifty thousand figure here. Two twelve point oh one C. Yeah, I would, I would, I guess I would just. I agree with that interpretation. I I would also say that um my experience is a lot better and I think. This should resonate with members of the council. We get into twelve oh one with frequency. Um you know, we're looking at that ordinance um. Uh on a fairly regular basis, there are lots of questions about particular transactions. Um we're always trying to make sure that, you know, we're operating within. Um the bounds of what two twelve allows. That's um something the auditor is. You know, uh. Making sure it happens on a manual basis. And so I'm I'm pretty confident that we don't have risk in connection with the way it's currently drafted. Thank you for raising. Any other questions, comments? And is there, well, this is on first reading or is it? I think, I mean, civil reason might even be ready to go. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion adopt emergency by Mrs. White. There's a. Second by Mrs. Spleen. A discussion on the motion. Now we'll take two votes. The first is on suspension of rules.
He said, I.
Spleen though.
I.
Rob.
Hi.
Spies.
Hi.
Cooney.
Hi. Hi.
Then we'll be in motion.
Seth.
I.
Spleen though.
I.
Spies.
Hi.
Spies.
And.
Cooney.
Hi.
Yeah.
Hi.
Very good motion here. Next is item G, uh ordinance twenty twenty three dash fourteen amended modified ordinance sections two fifty point oh one entitled city engineer. And declaring an emergency, this is what's on its first reading, Mr. McDonald. Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance similarly came out of the same set of committee meetings, you know. Um implements an RFQ process for selection of the city engineer. Um we also um. Indicate that the um RFQ process shall occur at least once every five years. Um so an engineer can be appointed initially and then reappointed um up to. Four consecutive times, and we can deal with that issue contractually, however, um administration and council would like to. But at least once every five years, she'll be able to pull up our queue to select the engineer. Yeah, very good. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Any questions, comments? Uh is there a motion? Motion adopt on emergency by Mrs. White. Is there a second?
Second there.
Second by Mrs. Spleen, a discussion. And we'll take two votes versus on suspension of the rules.
Okay, um this is Spleen though.
Hi.
Ms. Rob.
Hi.
Spies.
Hi.
Cooney.
Hi. Hi.
And then on the main motion.
Seth.
I'm.
Spleen though.
Hi.
Ms. Rob.
Hi.
Spies.
Hi.
Cooney.
Hi. Hi.
Very good. Motion carries. Next is item H, motion to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with S B X Engineers LLC consistent with S C S's March twenty eighth, twenty twenty three proposal. To develop a plan and associated cost for implementation of ordinance twenty twenty three dash oh five and an amount not to exceed twenty two thousand dollars. In the packet is a memo to council, city council from mayor, myself. Um attaching the proposal from S C S Engineers LLC to assist the city in developing a plan for. And ask for changing costs for implementation of rules and regulations for ordinance twenty twenty three dash oh five, the lose recycling services ordinance. You have a vacancy at the position of service director, but even without a vacancy, development of a plan to modify pickup is a task that requires outside expert assistance. I sought an engineering firm willing to undertake this project. C S Engineers LLC has provided the attached proposal, and I seek council's authorization. To proceed, therefore, request city council to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with S C S Engineers LLC consistent with S C S's March twenty eight. Twenty twenty three proposal to develop a plan and associated costs for implementation. Of ordinance twenty twenty three dash oh five and an amount not to exceed twenty two thousand dollars. Are there any question? Mrs. Sax.
Thank you. Um I appreciate that the mayor's making an attempt to plan for this. Change. To modernize to lose recycling. Um I have a couple of. Questions about this. Um. First of all, um does the cover page, it seems pretty biased. It says um that it will likely. Be two additional costs. As opposed to to determine what the costs are. You know, then I compared it to our chief. With those costs. So this is twenty two thousand dollars for one to two phone calls. And a best out study. So it's like an eleven thousand or twenty two thousand dollar phone call. Uh that's number one. And number two, I'm. A. Little bit. I mean, I'm not sure what, it doesn't really talk about what types of alternatives. So for instance. There's a perfect storm right now with the vacancy of the service director position. We have twenty one people in the service department. Three of which twenty percent were uh. Supervisors, which is pretty interesting um to look at that and see administratively if if that. Could be looked at. I don't know if that that's something that could be our savings. Um regionalized. Doing something together. We have great success. With um regionalizing some very critical services in our city, such as the dispatch or the uh emergency call system. Um the jail, some other things. So I wonder if something like that could be looked into. As cost effective, not necessarily likely to have additional. I wonder if um the MRF, if that's being looked at. I know our contracts, we don't do anything, heard anything about that. Um. Our neighbor Shaker Heights has backyard who's recycling, we're changing their MRF. Um are we, are they going to look at that as well? Uh there are so many different things that we could be talking about in terms of planning that don't cost anything yet. Uh that we have the services utilities committee meeting set up for their purpose on April twenty seven. So and and the final thing is. It's a little concerning to me that in the summer, uh they're running, you uh you were very. Glad to entertain the, what we call the second survey through R R S. Where five or six different scenarios with costs of collection were included, but deliberately. Omitted the cost of loose recycling in the backyard, which was brought up um several months before then as a possibility. To at a meeting that you attended. So is it twenty two thousand dollars to make up for that where we could have found out three? I don't know. Other, I I don't understand really everything that is uh. Going to be looked at or asked, who's going to be asked. Um. And so. I I hope that there's more discussion again that April twenty seventh service utilities committee meeting before going forward. With this uh proposal as of today. So we get more information about really what is going to be looked at that doesn't quote likely. Uh end up with additional costs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs.
Yeah, I I think this should. I think it's a further discussion. I think. You know, it might take a few committee meetings, but we. And also. Your services, um you know, would entail, but um I think this should be your first.
Great. Thank you. Any other comment?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, the this the scope of work that's being presented uh. Will be. Proposal. Looks like they're going to be. A review of the uh. The city collections system over the past five years. You know. I know Mrs. Sax has requested. So this way, you know, like there's been a review of the service routes. That were potential loser seconds. Potentially at that. And. We can add. Extensive. You know, research that they have here, what they can do. I think probably like my question right now was. Uh I think there's opportunity to kind of meet some of the professors Sax has been asked. Um but there's going to be. For committee. Obviously pushing some things back. You know, throughout the year, I think we could perhaps have a few questions raised. And flush out some of the ideas and there's. Perhaps an opportunity, but on the new service. Me and. Uh see some of these things and kind of marry together. Um not a particularly excited about the price tag. Um but I think we have to take a step back, vary the. Certification or potentially offering. For that busy. Move it the next couple of months. Maybe potentially move it, move it into service. Uh for now, for that. Bring back. See where we're at. Hopefully, I'll uh. You know, service director, what is available to see if there's a. Merit to. Speed present. I like the proposal. I like the information that's here. Um but maybe there's a little bit of a discussion to go along with the same.
Very, very good. Thank you, Mr. Cooney. Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to refer this to service.
Hey, we have a motion to refer this item to service utilities. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Sax, any discussion on the motion? This is Thomas we call him.
Seth.
Hi.
Miss Spleen though.
Hi.
Ms. Rob.
Hi.
Spies.
And.
Cooney.
Hi. Hi.
Hey, very good. The item is referred, served to the building's committee. Next is item I, resolution twenty twenty three dash fifteen in support of restoring home rules to allow local governments to again regulate bylaws. Calling upon the state of Ohio to ban the AR fifteen and AR fifteen style semi-automatic weapons. Among other common sense gun safety reports. It steepens extensively during my own report. So we'll. Purge back to those comments and ask if anybody has any other comments that I've raised at this. This is mine.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um while I feel that. Um assault weapons, something needs to be done. Um I feel that this is also an extremely complex issue. And the police chief needs to be highly involved with. I think that needs to be in the safety committee. Um within within end up. Discussion to ensure. We'll be able to. Force this. Uh it seems like. Um from what I've read. It's very difficult to enforce. And I want to make sure for that's something that. Actually, it's water. Um so I would like this seat.
I agree. Now, then other other major cities, other major some such. Um other major cities have tried to do this and they've. Um. They agree that it's incredibly complex. Issue. Um it's not something that can just be. Suggest to um not make suggestions. The idea of kind it. Um it's a nationwide. Epidemic outlets. But I do believe that this should go to the safety committee, and I agree that. Police chief and and his. Um administration should have a very, very large arm in that discussion. For some.
Sax.
Thank you. Um we have a precedent that I think was very constructive and very um. Uh. Good uh when we were able to review together with the police chief and lieutenant and then the legal department. The use of force policies here in the in the city. Which um I was privileged and honored to be a part of, took place. These are my fellow. What was it, a year and a half? I don't know. It took a while, but I think two years. So it it really um I think we'll have consensus and agreement. Of what um an excellent process that was, how collaborative was across the whole city. And how it just, I sleep better than I. And I think that um to both that process began in something this serious, choose a force. You know, this very serious also. Um would be uh something I would. Very much get behind. And it's not just significant input. People, please, but it's also from the legal. I think we have to marry those two and um look at it. I think we have to marry those two and um look at it from the angles that are really, it's not just a yes, it's an emotional, it's a, it's a, it's something, you know, we want, everybody's agreement, we want to see less violence. But how do we really get there? One thing we, what's really enforceable, what's, what really makes sense? We are a, a community where people trans, transit through. And if they're allowed to carry weapons in the neighboring city, they're just passing through and then they, you know, end up getting a conviction of felony for carrying something innocently coming through our s- less than two square mile city, we just have to look at that and have a realistically um address, um, address this issue so that it makes sense and um it's, it's a real uh solution, not just on paper, not just words. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mr. King.
Um, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for bringing this resolution. And pardon by the conversation that we're having this evening. I do think that this needs to, to maybe think some of the things that are mentioned here, in particular home rule, I think that's the reaction to the application responsibility. See, go. Constant warning that unsafe. We had an assault weapon ban on two thousand. Spect. From us, but back with, with the same steady cadence. Just this last year, we had we had concealed carry without permit. And I think that these things should be enforced at a high level, but if you put it, we have our hands tied. We're not. That responsibility is not being taken. Sending a message that we we're, we're sick of it. We'd like to see change. This is important. Or that hysterical headline we've seen too often. There's no way to prevent this in one nation. If it happens. We need to move beyond awesome prayers and real action from, I don't want to say a lot of divisions.
Mr. Row.
I give a lot of credit to my colleagues here. Um, great statements that you're all giving. You know, often entertaining resolutions that outside organizations that are very political, is a very political resolution, but we are considering it because it's important. So, um, I would like to see it go, which is seeking any been recommended. It's important to hear from the police chief while referring the mayor of what exactly the city can do. You know, in the resolution, it says, you know, City of Cleveland challenged the law and they lost. City of Cincinnati challenged the law and they lost. The City of Columbus is now challenging the law and Attorney General, um, defending or O R C. So what about this is going to make this different? Um, it's something that we really need to put our this together. I mean, we run Cincinnati, Columbus, my career, law departments, least of her. I want whatever we decide to do at um actual teeth. This is not something that just feels that it has to actually mean something. Um, and I just want to be careful with the word home rule because with over nine hundred municipalities in the state of Ohio, um, you're going to have nine hundred different rules. So, you know, even if we talk to our neighbors or talk to, you know, other municipalities and what, what can we do more comprehensively? Um, that's something I'd like to see. Um, but, but also show us your plan, though if, if we want to restore home rule, we're going to put our name on it. What does that look like? I want to see what that looks like here in University Heights. So maybe put together a plan of, you know, what you're thinking that is, you, is it a ban on assault rifles and, i- i- you know? What exactly is in that? So if we're to put our name on something, I really want to know what we're getting ourselves into. So um, perhaps in that meeting, I probably don't have it right today. Maybe we just found out about the seventy-two hour. So, um, I would think in that planning session, we could talk about what is that we're doing on university. I want to see that.
And just to address some of the points. Um, yeah, this is a resolution. So u- unlike the situations in City of Cleveland, City of Cincinnati, Cleveland, uh, attempted to, to regulate, um, they, they had their own municipal control that been down. And um Cincinnati tried to regulate bump stocks following the Las Vegas constant shooting. And uh the argument was made that the bump stock wasn't truly of my own, and they lost up in the morning. Um, City of Columbus is a myriad of changes that that they have made to their, you know, in those instances, those are actual legislative changes that that uh they are endeavoring to, to implement. And at when their injunction hearing, uh, Attorney General actually lost. And, and the court found that that is the peak that the uh state had not proven sufficiently that there was constitutional violation. All that said, um, there is nothing here that we are legislating other than issuing a resolution asking the state to either restore home rule to allow us to take up those kinds of changes or to take up the changes themselves since they preempted as a municipality from legislating on these points. We're not taking the Columbus approach where we're just going ahead and legislating any, that, that was the Cincinnati and Cleveland. But saying, you know, state, would you please either amend or repeal nine point six eight so that we can take? Or, or would you please take action? And here's a list of, of things you could be. So I, I don't see a I, I don't see a violation of nine point six eight by simply asking that changes. And, uh, and, and, but that said, I, I understand the points raised King and others that if this were to go to safety committee and, and certainly we can get, you know, further discussion involved with these chief, others, you know, the, the, the list, section one, uh, admittedly is not exhausted, as I indicated, I wrote in letter K. And act such other common sense legislation, promote public safety, things to fire, and since this list is exhausted, we can continue to weigh what some of those other things are, we'd be calling on the state to finally break. Mr. Cooney, I know you raised your hand. Thank you for putting together the resolution. Start station, so. And I'm glad to see several residents that come out regarding their thoughts of this. I guess in a way I'm kind of tired of seeing nothing. Yeah, I'm dead. I can't politically something get done that makes sense. You know, although we are a street council, we're a politician. We have them.
Thanks. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I would agree. You know, I, I don't want the perfect to be ending it, but I think we have a good resolution. But, but at the same time, you know, this was my right grant and, you know, you didn't see this until just a few days. So y- y- you know, I am eager to see it pass. I'm eager to see it pass tonight, but I'm also don't want to foreclose the input that any of you may have to add to what we're doing here, what I've suggested. You know, so if, if we're for all the safety committee to discuss this further means, you know, really looking at this to refine the statement. So it's truly all of our statement. If it's truly something that we can all co-sponsor, I would love that. That would be a wonderful thing for us to do and a wonderful statement by the committee. An even bigger statement and potentially to just pass it. Um, and, and if that is, you know, what we're talking to, and, you know, I would welcome the referral so that we can take this up at the next safety committee meeting and, and have those. Otherwise, otherwise, if, if it's, if, if, if we're generally in agreement that, that this is, you know, a statement of strength with regard to protecting our residents and, and, you know, we've referenced here things that have happened, or things that are of local concern in particular with regard to demographically groups that live in the city who have been sort of been targeted by violence. And it's not, they aren't send, and regarding groups full, which I referenced also during my report. Uh, there's plenty here that we can, that I, you know, we're all in agreement. I mean, if we're all in agreement, we can also look on. So we can, we can also say it's not. You know, we can do that right now. Mrs. Sax.
Thank you. So I'm wondering what the intention is. If it's to take a statement and that does nothing. Right, or it's nothing, it's better. If it's to implement home rule, that's very significant and serious. And I think you referred to a committee. It's not going to be a safety group. It's going to be safety, it's going to be a series of meetings to really flesh it out like we did. I use, use of course, because it's an excellent parallel to the um, just because we're emotional about, you know, it's, it's a moment, is not, um, thank you, it's, it's not going to catch. Unless, is what is your intention? What is the intention? Because I'm, I'm, I guess I'm missing the rush. Um, and I don't mean that it's not serious and it doesn't need to pay attention right now, but yesterday. But I mean, the rush to bypass a process, you could really have significance. And I, I read a statement by a resident, you know, we also want to do it in a way where we avoid litigation. Now, that's a real concern too. How can we really look at this through all the different angles so that we can truly set a precedent? If that's our intention. So I guess, I guess it's the intention and it's not.
Well, do you see a risk of litigation for passing? Because after this resolution, um, I don't want to, um, diminish the importance of the resolution by what I say, but the, the um import of the resolution that's passed is mainly symbolic. Um, it does call for the clerk to forward, um, sign out of the past resolutions to state legislators. Um, and in, insofar as it does that, it's a at least hypothetically, it means a putting pressure, um, elected officials to change the law. Current state of the law was, um, correctly, um, stated in broad terms by the mayor. Um, state legislature has enacted a, called general laws related to guns. Those general laws preempt the field and essentially preclude local municipalities from enacting anything that is contrary to those general laws. So we're in a position now where, um, any regulation that we pass, um, e- e- either needs to not touch on any of the current regulation of the state law um, or it will be deemed to be unconstitutional. Um, it will be deemed to be in, in conflict with the general law and therefore not enforceable. There are, you know, a lot of good lawyers in, in big cities who try to come up with creative ways of acting regulations that they hope would be interpreted by courts not touch on general laws enacted by the state that have lost. So it's all ask, um, to be sure to, to try to um, come up with a regulatory structure that won't violate, um, the state statutes. Um. So that, I think that this resolution reflects that reality, that current regulatory reality. Uh, most direct, perhaps best way for University Heights to control its own destiny as it relates to this issue um would be for the state to, um, give home rule back to the local municipalities on gun laws. And, um, only at that time would I recommend it to enact regulations, because otherwise you're asking for litigation um that you're, you're going to lose in all likelihood. Um, or alternatively, that the state hear you and change its laws and enact um gun legislation that reflects your values. I think that may seem farfetched to me. Um, essentially, sum up, um, this resolution would be something that invades to the public, um, your sentiments about gun laws on one hand, and also delivers the message to state legislators that you're bad. Thank you. This is one.
Yes, thank you. Um. Based on what everybody said, I, I do feel, um, that if it is brought to committee, the committee meeting should be only about this. I actually never thought about use of force committee because that was an amazing committee who, they diverse, the entire community was represented. Um, and I think a really powerful statement. Together. Um, so I hope you, I would be very much at least starting safety.
Very good. This is one.
I, what Mrs. White says, because for council to pass this resolution, while I agree with it, um, with its intent, I think it will send more of a message. I think it will send a more powerful message if the community is involved. And it becomes something that council can support. Yes, on behalf of the citizens, we would be doing that here. But to know that that kind of coming together, the hard work, the serious discussion went into what are the net final product looks like. None of this is going to happen overnight, so my little two guns are void, but, um, I think having it go to committee and have it be something like that use of force, because it was such good work by, by everyone involved. Like to see that happening then.
I'm hearing a couple of differences here because we do have a safety. I know that Sax actually brought up that we have been speaking interchangeably and I didn't intend to, but now we kind of are talking both. You know, it could be safety committee, yes, maybe a council, citizens or citizens, like the use of force committee. Well, yeah, I mean, I, I think that I think if, if you're going to refer a safety committee, that's probably the more direct to do is this Sax mentioned, and, you know, certainly start. And if something else arises from the safety abroad, and that would be something that happens within the conference. That commit.
What's that? What is that?
Safety.
Oh, okay. And, you know.
Yeah, and, and I know that Mr. hasn't been at the last couple of meetings, so we're three now, so I don't know if, um, there is an alternate that may be that we'd be in a meeting.
I know there's, there's going to be a safety committee next week.
Okay, well then perhaps we can add it to that. This is it.
Thank you. Um, I think to just what I think we've got to avoid is really University Heights, you know, kind of taking a little peep sound that's kind of disregarded. I don't want to inflate our sense of self. I want to be, I want to come with a real message that engages the chief of police, which I don't know happens, engages the law, you know, I want it to engage our professionals who are in the trenches and living and breathing this and can help guide us to, um, to really develop a plan and a proposal and something that's meaningful that we could be round zero and then, and then could spread to our neighbors and um, really be a model, maybe like the Iron Cup, I don't know. Um, but we, we can do some wonderful things. We have a lot of talent, we have a lot of passion, we have a lot of interest. And it comes from all corners of our city that I personally was very honored to participate in. So I know it can happen. It's not like, oh, it won't happen. I know it can happen and it can happen with an excellent product. So I'm, I'm not quick to rush. I think doing this now is premature. And I think doing this now is premature, um not that it, and I don't want my my message to be misconstrued. You don't mean that dressing done safety is is premature, I mean, it's here and now. But let's do it smartly, let's do it effectively and um and do it comprehensively, so it really. Means some. Because what we're saying here is, you know, politicians say things and they don't, and it doesn't mean anything. That's just the beliefs. We really, we have a track record of it and we can.
Zero motion.
We have a motion in the center already.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
The question by Mrs. Wise and second by Mrs. White, no, to refer to the same.
After vertice. Okay, very good, well then. There's no group discussion, we'll take a vote on the motion or further matters of the saving.
Set, I.
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 Spice, I.
Mr. Cooney.
I.
I, very good, that is referred, look forward to that meeting. Thank you, thank you for the thoughtful discussion on this. Um currently invited to Jay, most matters in executive session for purposes discussing legal, personal, real estate matters, the administration has. No further matters, standard of executive session over, we had the uh matter to get in a meeting. So I would then turn and see the reports, standing committees and taking action thereon, this is going to vote in house.
Thank you, Mayor. We anticipate having a main meeting that will continue the discussion of a number of. Items and potential performances. And I would ask Mrs. Thomas to add, yeah.
Very good, thank you. Good outreach, Mr. King.
Thank you, Mayor, uh there will be. Advisory committee meeting. Seven. Due here. Vendors. Proposals for city work services. Understanding questions. It's to them by by Aaron. That meeting and. In a decision. Services.
Yeah, very good, thank you. Economic development, Mr. Rob.
Uh yes, Mayor, on May, uh March twenty-second, two weeks ago, we had our first zoning meeting. And part of the uh zoning subcommittee for economic. Uh it was the zoning diagnostic presentation that we heard. And um this is the first in a series of meetings, the next step is to a deep dive and um. Work with administration. Pretty good conversation and I look forward to the. Continuing that.
Very good, thank. Uh finance, this is one.
And thank you very good, the finance.
Recreation, Mr. King. Thank you, Mayor, uh we had a recreation committee meeting earlier today for the city council meeting. Reviewing establishing uh the uh fees for the pool passes for the full season. Review of the maintenance schedule, lifeguards, should be a step available as well. Also great discussion on the uh great round. They program. Let's say we'll finish the giant girl construction at Gary's school. Um and a couple of gen items to follow up on, cards, potential artwork, uh some utility. Uh boxes and also uh we can get uh a tribute, that's a tribute for uh. Uh Ray Lancaster. See, then we'll, you know, we knew who Ray was. Very good, thank you, Mr. Cooney, uh safety, Mr. Goals not here, is anybody from the safety media report? Seeing none, I I think I didn't hear that there's a safety meeting scheduled. Seating the. Service utilities, this is.
Thank you, Mayor. Um our next service utilities committee meeting will be Thursday, April twenty-seventh at six o'clock. Uh where we will have collaborative discussion for the purpose of implementing ordinance twenty twenty-three oh five, loose recycling services. I'll need to know, Mayor, if I um can amend the agenda, if S E S uh engineers Alex P. Uh is able to somehow participate and uh fill in the blanks for us, let us know what they have in mind. Um so we can uh make a good decision on whether to proceed with um.
I can check when they're available, I know that the meeting is for one hour.
I'd like longer. I know, I originally made it till seven thirty, but I'm collaborative.
Well, I I think you mentioned.
Original, um.
Thank you.
Earlier, so we started an hour, if we need more time, we'll take another meeting. And then you can.
I'll check.
See your comments.
S C S. Very good, we need the whole, this is one. There any reports of special committees in taking action now? Any unfinished or miscellaneous business? Their motion, religion.
Some of them.
Question of the day by Mr. Sand, second by Mr. Rock, this is us, we call the role.
Mr. Set, hi.
Mayor adjourned.